Good morning. It's Wednesday, May 17, 2017. We're in the Senator hearing room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item is always public comment. Nobody has signed up, take advantage of that, so we'll move into the consent calendar. Commissioner Carlson, you are the consensus winner of that opportunity.
Well, thank you. Was there a drawing before?
Kind of, there was a discussion.
All right. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, we have one OLCC application that's recommended for approval. It's for RJAM Hoy LLC, DBA Geppetto's Italian Restaurant in Salem, Oregon. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Cheryl Pellegrini and Carrie Muller to the Marion County Children and Families Commission with terms ending June 30, 2018. Under Public Works, approve the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for Right-of-Way Services for the Lancaster Drive-McClure Road Traffic Signal Upgrade, and approve an order appointing Warren Jackson as Marion County Building Official.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar this morning and further discussion. Just one note, it seemed like Warren Jackson should say be reappointing, but that's fine, he's back and happy about that. Anything else? All right, hearing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. We have three, I believe, action items. The first is, under Information Technology, we consider approval to proceed with the purchase of Oracle EBS Systems and close the audit process. I don't know what this means, but Chris Gergari Kristofferson, if you would explain it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, John, Bruce, and Christine. Marion County began the use of the Oracle eBusiness Suite in the late 1990s when the Oracle systems were still housed at the Joint Marion-Salem Data Center. Marion County attained some of our original licensing during the separation from that data center. We currently use the financial, the HR, payroll, and benefits modules of the FEMs application. Marion County has purchased additional licensing over the years for both growth in the employee base and to implement functionality such as the benefits module. In 2016, Oracle began an audit of the Marion County licensing structure to assess compliance with their current license model. The purchase and audit resolution before you today are the result of the past 10 months of audit activities designed to bring acceptance of compliance terms by Marion County and Oracle. I'd like to introduce Julie Walton. She's the IT Business Manager for Oracle and FEMs in IT, and she's been involved in the audit process from the beginning, and she's going to get into more detail for you right now.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners, John, Bruce. Marion County was notified of the pending audit about 10 months ago. It is not disclosed why an entity is chosen for audit. It's just a random process, and it was our turn, I guess. Oracle provided numerous scripts to be run against our system to collect data related to how our hardware and software are configured. The resulting reports were reviewed at length by Oracle and the county. Oracle identified several areas as being noncompliant by their interpretation of the licensing requirements. However, by our interpretation, we felt we were compliant. As the licensing verbiage is somewhat vague, we couldn't come to mutual agreement, and discussion stalled out fairly quickly. However, our DBA's in-depth understanding of the hardware and software configurations brought doubt that Oracle's interpretation was actually solid. A new Oracle team was brought in to pave the way to mutual acceptance and bring greater benefit of Oracle product use to the county. Oracle acknowledged that we had no ill intent in our use of the licensing and that we had not purposely misused their products. This transitioned us into negotiations, and it became clear that the goal was to settle at an unspecified dollar amount. We didn't know what it was, but we knew there was an amount out there that they were looking for. Oracle presented several options. The first was to accept their full findings and pay nearly $1.2 million for present and past usage, which they felt we had not licensed. The second was to reduce functionality and therefore incur less licensing cost. That would mean that we couldn't run payroll and benefits, which didn't seem to be a particularly advantageous solution. The third was to purchase licenses and products that would benefit our use of Oracle in the long run and essentially get them to that dollar amount that they were looking for in terms of sales. That was the option that we chose. They presented several options, most of which were very expensive and didn't offer us any real benefit. Most revolved around the use of cloud-based services from Oracle, which would have increased our operating costs by at least 25% on an ongoing basis. We arrived at the purchase in front of you, which includes purchase of two test servers and additional payroll and benefits licenses. The test servers were due for replacement anyway and were already in the approved 16-17 budget, so that brought our additional purchase really just to licenses. The additional software licenses purchased will bring us into compliance with Oracle's interpretation of those for whom we must pay a payroll and a benefits license. The crux of it was, we didn't feel that we needed to have a benefits and a payroll license for all people associated with the county. They felt we did. It's just a matter of interpretation. As part to bring us to resolution of the audit, we agreed or tentatively agreeing to buy those additional licenses so that we are compliant with their interpretation and can proceed to use all of the benefits and payroll processing that we already have. The resulting cost is $175,000, which has been secured from the already allocated server budget plus reallocation of funds that were originally targeted for other projects that are not going to be completed this year. The last item of resolution is trade-in at no cost payroll and benefits licenses that were purchased under earlier licensing models. Every few years, Oracle changes its licensing model, and we should be upgrading or swapping in old licenses and getting new licenses, but as Oracle doesn't inform you when this is happening, it's difficult to stay on top of it, and I'll get to more of that in a minute. By changing in all of our old licenses for current licensing models, we will avoid ambiguity going forward and align the functionality available to us through ownership of those licenses. With this purchase and adoption of the hardware configurations that Oracle prefers, we will have gained compliance, as indicated in the audit resolution letter in your packet, which was reviewed and approved by legal. And Bruce has been over all of these documents quite a number of times. As many customers are experiencing confusion regarding licensing models, Oracle has reinstituted its account manager program. This assigns a single account manager to our organization to facilitate a single point of contact, annual review of our licensing requirements, and trade-ins when models change. This will allow us to remain compliant going forward, and it gives us an annual review option with them to identify new products, better licensing models which could be advantageous for us, et cetera. So we should be able to remain compliant and not have this problem again going forward. Any questions?
Are there questions? John.
Mr. Chair, I was sort of on the sidelines with this, but it took a long time. I have worried about the way Oracle does business with people like us, and that's why we've talked with IT about making sure that we have a process for constantly reviewing this Oracle. I'll have to be careful how I say it. The way Oracle does business, I'm not sure whether we were targeted because of their unhappiness with Oregon, but it sure seemed like it because some of the things that they were arguing with us about was stuff they really had us doing and then telling us that we didn't have licenses for it, which just didn't make sense at all. So we're going to make sure that we're very wary of anything they do in the future, and they have assigned somebody to work with us to make sure that this doesn't happen again. I think this is a good agreement because we will get some new equipment that we needed anyway, and it'll bring our licenses up to where they should be. The biggest problem we have with Oracle is that they changed this licensing business sort of at the drop of a hat. You never know when they're going to do it. I think it's when Larry needs a new boat or something that they start doing this. But it's a business model that is really difficult on the users of their software and equipment, but we're okay now if we do this.
Anything else? All right.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve to proceed with the purchase of Oracle EBS Systems and close the audit process.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase Oracle EBS System. I do have one comment. I want to thank those who were involved. Looked like you did a tremendous job protecting the county, and maybe not quite 10%, but certainly not the million-whatever that they wanted, and bring us all up to current with a system in the future. Probably about as good as it can do unless there's some real competitor out there and you can look to do something else, but I was only watching what it took to do the last upgrade five or six years ago, so I suspect you're pretty captive.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Anything else? And call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Julie. She really did a lot of work on this, and without Julie, we'd have a lot of problems with our FEMs system. She knows this stuff backwards and forwards, and I'm really happy to have her around.
Thank you. I'd like to give credit to our senior DBA also. Laney was an excellent participant in this, and her knowledge of the hardware and software configurations of our system were absolutely critical in getting Oracle to a point of resolution. She's an awesome DBA.
Maybe I just have to... What is a DBA? Is that what you're saying?
Database administrator.
Database administrator.
Thought it was doing business.
Yeah. So who is she really, I was thinking?
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Chair. Laney came to us from Salem several years ago and has been instrumental in really keeping our database structure in good repair.
Thank her too, then. Great. All right, our next item's under juvenile. We consider approval of a contract for services with C&amp;J Nurse Staffing LLC to provide nursing services to youth involved with the juvenile programs for $500,000 through April 30, 2020. Chuck Sibren is not Faye Fagel, but go ahead.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioners, and I apologize for my voice. Allergies have set in, and they won't leave for a few months. We are here to discuss contract proposal from C&amp;J Nurse Staffing. What we do at the juvenile department, we have a number of kids that are actively with us either through our detention center beds or our guaranteed attendance program, which is our shelter program. We also have youth coming in from the community that work in our work program. And what we see as a priority is to be able to meet the minimum needs, mental, medical needs that these kids tend to have. Kids staying with us often have medications that need to be distributed, monitored, correctly documented, and what we would like to also do is, we have a lot of kids that tend to use illness to get out of work, which is normal, so we send them to the nurse. We also address issues that come to our knowledge. Just recently, we had a youth in detention and ended up going to the hospital and having his appendix out. That would not have necessarily been taken care of in such a swift manner, but our nurse was on duty. They provide coverage from about 6:00 in the morning till almost 9:00 at night, seven days a week, and as a backup, we, our staff are also trained to provide medications or distribute medications and document their MARS and that type of thing. We think that going with C&amp;J Nurse Staffing will provide that stability that we've been needing for the last six to 12 months, and it's clear that the medical program is stable again and providing that minimum base of medical services for kids. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions because it feels like you're kind of starting in the middle. So you've had this program before, it's budgeted. Did you do it with in-house staff? Did you contract with others? Was it up for RFP? I don't know why it wasn't stable before, so can you maybe track back a little bit to give us some context?
Sure. Some of the history is that we had a contract for many years with a company that tended to struggle to meet our staffing needs in the nursing area. As this continued to deteriorate, we addressed that issue, and with the help of Bruce, we stepped out of the contract. We have since been, had some temporary contracts fill in until we worked with C&amp;J and went through the contract process. Given that it was medical and necessary, we were not required to go through the RFP process.
All right. And so then the $500,000 for three years, is that within the budget that you've had for the service before?
It is. In addition, it's a little bit of a savings.
Oh, okay. That's good. All right. Those were my questions.
I did have one, Chuck. You left a little gap, and you said you fill it probably in with staff between 9:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning, if those are the hours. Is there nursing more than just staff available during those nighttime?
Yes, we do have, as part of the contract, if we have an issue that we believe the nurse needs to come in, that they will respond within 45 minutes. Outside of that, we have occasionally called the ambulance to come.
Okay. So has that happened in this very often, that you need to call somebody back?
No, it doesn't. We do have situations where we have behavioral issues, and we've had to use what's called a restraint chair. There is a requirement within our contract that they respond to that as well as a mental health response to that, so that we can make sure we have not only the medical but the mental health basis covered with each youth that experiences that. We also have a doctor on call 24 hours a day where we can make contact with him.
Bottom line, you get the coverage you need.
We got the coverage, yes.
Great. All right, so, anything else?
Good.
All right. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the contract for services with C&amp;J Nurse Staffing LLC to provide nursing services to youth involved with juvenile programs for $500,000 through April 30, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve the contract for services with C&amp;J Nurse Staffing LLC. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, then say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're a little slow on the trigger.
Yeah, I think it's like...
I didn't get much sleep last night.
Facebook Live is...
No, I woke up at 3:00. I think I got to bed at 10:30 and woke up at 3:00 this morning. Couldn't go back to sleep. So bear with me.
All right. So I'll open the Contract Review Board, and this is in the Sheriff's Office. We consider approval of a class special procurement for the Marion County Reentry Initiative. Jeff Woods and Jacob Klotfelter, good morning. Probably said that wrong, but you can correct me.
You're okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Klotfelter. I'm with the Marion County Finance Department, and I have Commander Wood here from the Marion County Sheriff's Office. We have before you today, as the local Contract Review Board, a board order, a request to approve a board order that would authorize a class special procurement that would support the Marion County Reentry Initiative. The class special procurement is allowed by Section 20-285 of the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Section 279B.085 of the Oregon Revised Statute. We have done a seven-day public notice on this class special procurement, and we received no protests, no comment, so we bring it before you today with no public comment. So that's the procurement end of the logistics, and for any operational questions, Commander Wood, I'm sure would be happy to handle those.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for a moment of your time. For the record, Jeff Wood, Marion County Sheriff's Office, Division Commander. You've all heard this story a number of times, but the Marion County Reentry Initiative has been in existence in some form since 2005. When it was first initiated, the reentry initiative was entirely a sole-source contract with a private nonprofit entity that went from one person to the one person and a transitional house. As we fast forward to 2009, the Sheriff's Office, with help from the Board's Office, we received a Bureau of Justice Assistance grant to continue with that transitional housing project that we had in existence. Unfortunately, that nonprofit could no longer continue doing those services, and having been brand-new to my position at the time, we were somewhat in disarray, and I was working with Commissioner Carlson to try to figure out where we could go with this project and the reentry initiative itself. I will say, and I actually agree with the terminology, Commissioner Carlson, in her words, said, "I have a scathingly brilliant idea," and candidly, it was. As we went from a sole source...
I have some Hayley Mills movie.
We go from a sole-source initiative to a collaborative model, where we have subject matter experts kind of delivering their trade, their craft, in the areas that they are suitably equipped to do, where we have Community Action Agency with the Immunos Resource Center, providing services to people and providing services to some of our programs. We have the Union Gospel Mission providing housing for our clients, the Health Department providing treatment services as part of the Student Opportunity for Achieving Results or SOAR program, Full Circle Consulting, providing project management and coordination of services, which I always kind of jokingly refer to as the herding of cats, and Shemecata Community College, which provides both services on the SOAR, in the SOAR program, and on the Shemecata campus for employment and education. Our model has been successful. It's also, it's been so successful, I think we've also merged it into our not only prison reentry programming, but our prison diversion programming. I will say that there is a robust governance structure of the reentry initiative, including the Board of Commissioners, the Community Corrections Board, the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and the newly renamed Justice Reinvestment Council. I would say that this model, this collaborative model, is not meant to exclude any one entity, but candidly, the Board, the Sheriff, the Legislature expect results from our programming. As you've all heard me say repeatedly, with the passage of Senate Bill 267 back in 2003, our programming must be evidence-based, and while I would say, if not all, most of the programs say they are evidence-based, and I am encouraged when I start hearing programs talk about social determinants of health, similar to the way you hear me talk about criminogenic risk factors, there still is a ways to go, and we still need to deliver services to a clientele, as Commissioner Cameron may have seen last week, who at times can be pre-contemplative and live in circumstances, I'll just say, that are less than ideal. This special procurement has been in existence for four years. It has allowed us to deliver not only quality services but swiftly contract for those services with qualified partners, and my hope is we can continue that for another two years. With that, I will be available for any questions, as with Jacob.
Questions or comments?
Well, I recall the history that Jeff summarized. We had been working with this, they had been working with this nonprofit, and I got involved, I think, the first time when there was a grant that was proposed and money set aside, and then we didn't get the grant because we really didn't have a strong way of describing what we were doing, and so got kind of involved in the grant-writing process. But we had a, well, Plan A was this one nonprofit, and when that didn't work, we had Plan B and talked to another nonprofit, and they said no, and then Plan C, we went down to Eugene and talked to a nonprofit down there, and they said no. And so I was just racking my brain, trying to think, okay, so what happens if this doesn't work out? And then we were, had been working on the mental health and substance abuse, this Cascadia, if you remember, Commissioner Brentano was here during that time, when we almost lost all of our treatment services because a Portland provider went out of business, and we were talking about diversifying. And so I called Jeff and I said, "I've got this scathingly brilliant idea. What if we diversify?" And then I started explaining what I thought, and he goes, "Commissioner, you had me at diversify." That was great. So, anyway, this has been a very strong collaboration, and as Jeff talked about, the importance of, I mean, it's not for the faint of heart, I guess, is what you would say in terms of the providers that work with this population. They have to have not only a strong service provider, the quality of their services, but being evidence-based, as we've learned with corrections, adds a layer on top of it. I've heard Tina Bialas from Bridgeway Recovery Services talk about that if they were doing evidence-based practices for people that just had addictions, they would do it a bit differently than they're doing it for the corrections clients. The dosage, as we call it, is much higher. They have to have much more frequent contact, and there's assessments that have to be done, and there's a corrections program checklist that each provider has to get a strong score on. So while we are open and we have many providers that are interested in our services, this core set of providers, they have walked the path with us and they are able now to deliver in a way that we're getting the strong outcomes that we're getting. So I think those factors help justify the idea that we're doing this special procurement process for this particular initiative rather than requiring the Sheriff's Office to go out and do a competitive process for these services.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want, Jeff, thank you for the opportunity to do that right along last week. It was pretty eye-opening for me.
I believe our deputies appreciated you coming out, Commissioner. They had a lot to say afterwards.
Did they? I'd like to hear what they said.
All positive, sir.
That's a tough job. I'm just, yeah, eye-opening.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion to approve it, then, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the class special procurement for the Marion County Reentry Initiative.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the class special procurement for Marion County Reentry. Any further discussion? Again, there's hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and again, thank you for all your work, good efforts. I'll close the Contract Review, pardon me.
I jumped on that one.
Well, no, it took some coaxing, but thank you for thinking so. Let's see, where was I? Close the Contract Review Board. Is there anything else to come before the Board this morning? This is what makes Bruce nervous, where we might go. See anything? So with that, I'll just read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Today, the 17th, at 3:00 to 5:00, the Insight Board of Directors Meeting, Insight Board Room, Suite 305, 626 High Street, Northeast in Salem. Wednesday, 1:00 to 3:00, Northwest Senior Disability Service, 3410 Cherry Avenue, Northeast in Salem, Large Conference Room. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 18th, 7:00 to 8:00, Community Stakeholders Meeting, Oregon State Capitol Building Room, H278, 900 Court Street, Northeast Salem. That's followed immediately at 8:00 with the City of Salem-Marion County Meeting. A breakfast be held at Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street, Northeast in Salem. At 9:30, a one-on-one with Department Head, Health Department Director Carrie Muller, that'll be in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Next Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar... Next Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room. That's followed at 9:00, a very short one, 9:00 to 9:45, management update in Silverton Conference Room. And at 10:00, this is again Monday, the 22nd, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting, executive session if needed, Pursuit 2, ORS 1926602 ABDFHNI, almost all of them, and that'll be in the Silverton Conference Room, again, on fifth floor in this building. Tuesday, the 23rd, 8:30 to 10:00, Community Corrections Board, Silverton Conference Room. And Wednesday, 8:00 till 10:00, a pre-trial technical assistant debrief, debrief, Commissioners' Board Room, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem, fifth floor, and that'll be followed by a late Board meeting. Our next regular Board meeting will be scheduled for 10:00 here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem.
Does all be over at?
Yeah, why isn't some of that, are both you going to?
I think Commissioner's going to be here for the Board meeting. I'll be there Wednesday. I'll be gone Wednesday, and then we're going to switch places.
Yeah, so he's leaving, and then I'm going, so we never overlap, which is why I didn't make it on the list. But we are going to the National Association of Counties Western Interstate Region Conference, which is an opportunity for people from all over the country who are work with counties to come here and see Oregon. Matt Chase, who is the director, has never been to Oregon, he said, so that's going to be a great opportunity.
So what do you want to accomplish? Anything I can look for?
Well, I'm on the Board, so I'm just going to see what the Board agenda is. It's it really focuses a lot on public lands, the Western Interstate Region does, which is more what you what you focus on, less what I focus on, so.
I know the OMC Board mostly will be there. I just didn't see what I would accomplish, and I'm not going. All right. Anything else this morning?
Somebody has to stay back and take care of business.
That's right. Sound gets through to the county.
Yeah. I don't hear anything else. Christie's ready to leave. Let's call this meeting adjourned.